I can call the Duval City Council of a whole to order at five thirty P M for G seventeen twenty twenty five. We'll start the evening with a good order. So the the one item I'll have sort of the good order, I I talked to the clerk about this a little bit and and when I was reading the council procedures. Good order is typically at the end of the meeting rather than the beginning and I had to try to get some historical context and there wasn't a lot there. I think the other thing is the council and the city council meeting are separate and so when issues have come up. Either random items that are on on the agenda that need continued discussion or even more recently, some of the the council interaction discussions which we need to talk about, that's really typically the place where that would happen. So um I just wanted to get a sort of a pulse from from the council. There's the opposition if we move that toward the end of the meeting going forward and and then add something. I have an attitude to the city council as well, so that they don't want to be it and otherwise we we don't use it. The other thing it avoids is sort of a random topics coming up and sort of throwing off the the timeline in the beginning rather than at the end of the meeting or their sort of pushback.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea to move it to the end of the meeting. And I I think that will remove a lot of stress from trying to stay on track with what we actually schedule and then if there's extra time at the end, we kind of get into what we want to. So I think it's a good idea.
And then the other item I had also sort of around the council of the whole, we've had obviously had a lot of gate driven work that we've done. So as as part of, um, obviously, this is going to be a little more working session because we are actually talking about council procedures. I know that's another area I think going forward, maybe we worked to get some of those media subjects. I had there was some feedback from I think some of the other council members that weren't here that we didn't get kind of deep enough. And so again, it'd be sort of the agenda planning going forward. If you have ideas or suggestions that either relate to the the previous committees or policy areas that we want to get into, S E A is also revamping their structure a little bit to drive more quality driven decisions and that I think might require more feedback from the council. So again, just again, no action needed tonight, but just with that, uh, I know we don't have a lot on the regular reading tonight, but uh, okay, so I'm sorry.
So thank you very first time. Okay, so good order. Are you suggesting we move it to the end of power, the end of the council?
So in Robert's rules, it's typically always at the end. And I think one of the things that Clark and I discussed a little is is even though we've kind of structured it as a run on meeting from one to the other, there are actually two separate meetings. So the suggestion was to have a ideally, we'll just have one, I think, at at the end of the council meeting. Yeah, so that that would be my preferred. And I think if there's anything from the cow, that could also be brought up in the council meeting as well. If we find that there's revision or or things we need to do within the council structure, I don't know why we couldn't discuss it in the council meeting, but we could all add it.
Okay, thank you.
I think the other last point I'll make on there is we also can't take action in the house. So if you have to take action on something, it makes more sense to have All right, um, any um feedback on the regular meeting agenda, which I think either around the consent agenda of the business? So with that moving right along, uh, we have our presentation this evening for the King County Search and Rescue Association, uh, Josh Urshman from King County Search Dogs, Tony Bannock, King County Explorer Search and Rescue and Christine Nelson of King County Search and Rescue, uh, obviously Director of Communications for today. If you're welcome to come up, you can either probably easier in front there, but we're
Yeah, what works best?
Um, I think if you don't want to come out to the podium.
Well, first off, thank you very much for the invitation. We're really glad to be here and to have an opportunity to talk with you and tell you about who we are and what we do. Um, I'm Christine Nelson. I'm the communications director. I've been a member of King County Search and Rescue for almost eight years. Uh, professionally, um, I'm a retired Air Force officer with a career of uh twenty two years after graduating from the University of Washington. Um, and I've since I retired, I've been, you know, devoted to community service. Um, before I start into the presentation, I would like to introduce uh Josh and Tony and have them uh say a little bit about themselves.
Uh, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Josh Gershman. I am a dog handler with King County Search Dogs. I'm uh my wife Heather and I have been members for twenty eight years. So we we've been at this for a little while. Uh, we currently have uh three dogs in our house. We've had seven dogs total. We spent a lot of time in Duval over the years, uh, both on mission response and training in your beautiful foothills and uh uh local open areas. Um, I'm a Covington resident. I professionally work at Highline College on the College Leadership Team. I get to spend a lot of lot of time with your uh peers in South King County cities. Uh, so I appreciate all the work that you're doing and happy to be here today as a volunteer of King County Search and Rescue. And I also wanted to briefly introduce uh Brittany Stewart, who is uh also a member of King County Search Dogs, our current Vice President of our unit and a local resident who wanted to hear what we were doing here locally. So.
Hi, I'm uh Tony Bannock and I'm with the Explorer Search and Rescue Unit as part of the King County Search and Rescue Association. And um I've been with the unit for just about three years now. I'm a team leader uh as part of the group and uh been on about eighty missions now um all throughout the King County area. And my background is uh in chiropractic and healthcare. Uh, I used to own a clinic in downtown Iscoa for about twenty years. Uh, and I've kind of slowed down. And uh, this is what I do as a as my fun time is get out there and and help folks out. I just love continuing to help people out and be in the outdoors at the same time. So really love what we do.
Okay, well, as you can see on the title, our title slide, um, twenty twenty five is the sixtieth anniversary of the Search and Rescue Association. By Washington state law, the uh law enforcement, a primary law enforcement person of the in our case, the county has a responsibility for search and rescue. So in King County, it is the King County Sheriff's Office. And we are volunteer organizations that only go out when tasked by the sheriff's office. Next slide, please. Who we are, uh, we are all volunteer. Uh, we only have one paid employee who is Carrie Lee Gagnon, our uh executive director. Uh, she she is, she and her family just left on vacation and she uh sends her regrets. She wanted to be here tonight. Um, although it does say volunteer, I like the better term unpaid professionals. Because um a lot of our folks not only have the the mandatory training for search and rescue, but bring a whole host of absolutely amazing abilities along with them, whether it be technology or management or health or uh it just across the spectrum. We serve the community, our primary source of funding, our donations and uh and grants. Next slide, please. After the first three founding units, which were Seattle Mountain Rescue, the Explorer Search and Rescue and four by four searching rescue began operating uh in the late forties and fifties and early sixties, it became apparent that uh better collaboration and sharing and trying to just um get together uh better and help the effort so that that way when missions are called, the primary focus can be on the operations. And this continues today. We um not only are each of the nine units a separate nonprofit organization, but the association itself is a five oh one C three organization with a board of directors uh that that manages it. Next slide. Here's how we've grown over the years. As I said, it started off with the Seattle Mountain Rescue. They continue to be a a nation national leader in uh Mountain SAR, uh high angle stuff. They're all climbers and mountaineers who have amazing technical skills. Um, Explorer Search and Rescue is the largest unit. They do a lot of the groundwork. Anytime a lot of people are needed, whether it's to facilitate a search or a rescue, ESAR is one of the prime units there. Four by four provides not only the vehicle transportation, but a lot of logistics and support and also can can provide uh landing zones for helicopters. In fact, if any of you were at the Fall City Days this past weekend, it was our four by four unit that was providing the the safe landing zone for the life uh flight helicopter. SPART is the ski patrol rescue team. They are all members of the National Ski Patrol. They're fabulous when it comes to like backcountry skiers that have gotten into trouble or other times when we're out where there's either avalanche conditions, snow conditions. They also have, um, all of them have advanced medical training beyond uh usually beyond um wilderness, first aid and that type of thing. So they're also like very active at Seafair. You'll see them down at the hydro pits uh running a a medical um friage that that not only helps attendees, but they also assist with providing medical support to the drivers and other participants. Um, we've got trackers that came along to with some of the cold cases. They have really amazing uh training on on finding places where people have gone through. Um, they were essential in some of the uh uh Green River Killer um cases that were searched. Got the K nine team. Um, the incident support team, which I am part of, does a lot of the command post support uh mapping, tracking people, communications and um this incident management system is a way that we can not only support small missions, but we can also support bigger missions and uh grow into things depending on the amount of resources needed. Finally, we've got the research special regional special vehicles unit. They have both uh like snow machines in the winter and they can put tracks on things and and they can go places and provide transportation and good capabilities. Um, we're also growing in the terms of technology. Cell phones have really changed the way things operate. It used to be like fifteen years ago. A lot of SAR calls would be someone would say, my loved one hasn't come back yet. Well, where do we go look for them? Well, they went up, say, off the middle fork and they're hiking on this trail. Well, that's pretty doggone big area to search. Well, anymore I'd say most of our calls come from someone with a cellphone or someone with a satellite device. And even if they're not within cellphone range, now some of the newest cellphones actually have satellite capability. Or even if they've gone beyond cellphone range, um, there are some uh cellphone forensics that the sheriff's office is able to use. So we at least have it, but it know where we go. The other thing that's amazing to me is when we call nine one one, um they're going to have a pretty good location on where that call is coming from. Um, I'm sure you know about that, but it's it's uh it's pretty cool that when we get uh a nine one one call where someone says, oh, my gosh, I'm up here hiking and I'm lost. By the time we, the volunteers get it, the sheriff's giving us a pretty doggone good set of coordinates on where we're headed for. We're also employing drones and doing an experiment with e-bikes on a better trail access. Next one. Um, it's kind of a building block on why, okay, we've got nine units. So how what happens when we get a call? Um, we are all um background checked, state certified emergency workers. We have training in search and rescue and then a whole lot of other skills. More than eighty five percent of the time, two, two or more units are involved in the missions. We run on an average, you know, six hundred or some of which probably a third of those are very active. And we only have one uh King County SAR coordinator. On any given mission, when we're out in the field, there will be a member of the King County, you know, a King County Sheriff's Deputy who will be our incident commander. Um, and that's who's directing the show and doing an awful lot of amazing things in the background, coordinating things like uh helicopter air support if we need that or other resources. Next slide. Um, this is a heat map that shows in general where those four hundred and eighty three missions have been over the last three years. You can kind of see there's a a big grouping of them on the I ninety corridor. A lot of good recreation there. Um, but there are also uh some up there a bit north because Highway two, most of the areas south of it is King County. So, oh yeah, if there's a mission up south of Skye Comish, we're going. Um, down around the mountain near area and there's a number of dots in the urban area, about eleven percent of our missions actually are urban. Uh, it may be a dementia walk away, someone on on the autism spectrum that's wandered away from their care facility. Uh, evidence search support for the sheriff's office or some other things that would be done in an urban environment. And yeah, there's also some dots out of the county and those represent uh times when we've been asked to go out mutual aid to other counties. And yes, if we have a big mission, SAR units from other counties will come into King County and support us as well. Next slide. So we're looking at projections in the King County that we're going to continue to grow. And tourism is going to continue to grow. As search and rescue is a public safety service, we not only are supporting the residents of the county, but all of our visitors that come in, whether they're recreating or anything else, no matter who it be, who it is, get into trouble. We may be called to uh help out. So it's it's just saying this is one of the factors we're looking at when we're looking at being able to grow our organization and grow our capability. Because we see um, we see things continuing to increase over the next, you know, ten to twenty years. Next slide. Outdoor recreation, uh, yeah, contributes to our gross domestic product in some areas like Gateway Communities that have a lot of uh people coming through to recreate. It can be, it can be a lot more than that. I know from working with the Washington State Recreation Responsible Coalition and working with our land managers in the Forest Service and others where they're, you know, experiencing staffing and funding cuts right now. Uh, there's a lot of communities that border those places that have good trailheads that have good recreation facilities. They're very concerned about the impact um of what that might mean to the communities. Um, we, in the state of Washington, there is a SAR coordinator that is in the um emergency management division. But there's only a small amount of funding that really goes to reimbursements. So a lot of it again is considered a local or a community um obligation. I do want to make the point at at right now that we never charge for our services. We do not want people to ever hesitate to call for help. Because if they wait, the situation could get worse, the illness or injury could get worse, nighttime could fall. It makes it a more serious situation for the individuals involved and it also makes it um a more difficult, demanding and possibly hazardous situation for the SAR volunteers that are going in. Next one. So as an association, we've got our strategic plans and we've got some priorities. This is what we're looking to work on in the next five to ten years um to try to increase our visibility, increase public education, which we call preventative SAR. And to develop some sustainable funding and growth. And we always need to continue to recruit and retain our volunteers. Okay, next slide. So now I'm going to turn it over to Tony.
All right, thank you again. So like I said, I'm Tony Bannock and I represent uh the Explorer Search and Rescue, which is basically one of the largest units. We're kind of the boots on the ground, kind of the grunts. We get in there. I carry lots of heavy stuff and up trails and uh bring people down those trails as well. So uh it's um it's when you think of search or rescue, you think of the wilderness, right? Searching for people and rescuing them, right? But like Christine said, we also do a lot of urban and rural stuff where we're um going after folks who've walked away from home, dementia, Alzheimer's patients, or even those autistic children uh that are at high risk and we can mobilize a lot of resources to help the sheriff's department um get these folks back home as quickly as possible. Um, there was a recent one in Woodenville. Um, and we searched for six days and we did not give up. I mean, we used a helicopter infrared, we use drones, we use the canines. And uh I will tell you one thing about search and rescue is we are very tenacious about accomplishing the mission. Uh, and so, you know, um, I think that's that's a a really something that I feel like we're we're kind of proud of. Um, evidence searches. So we helped the King County Sheriff's Office. Um, like Christine said, one of the most famous cases is the Green River Killer, uh, able to locate some of the victims and bring those folks back to their families, which is really huge. We're also involved in recovery. So if somebody goes out on an adventure in the back country and and they don't make it, they don't survive. Uh, you know, we're tasked with bringing those folks home to their loved ones and that's a really important thing to do as well. Uh, we have, you know, the specialized skills, the the um high angle rescue, rigging, avalanche rescue, swift water rescue, canines, four by four ATV. I remember a couple of years ago, I was involved in a a search for a ten year old girl who went missing at a campground in Kidittas County and they called King County to help with that. And we, I mean, you know, as any of you who are parents, even if you're not a parent, you understand the the you know, the vigor with which we were looking for this ten year old kid who spent the night out in woods and finally the next day after thirty, about thirty six hours, we located her. But we had a helicopter out there with the dog teams were out there. Uh, you know, there was over a hundred and fifty volunteers on the ground. We had drones. We had swift water rescue there. So really mobilize all those resources to really make this happen and think about how many of those folks are volunteers, right? So it's pretty cool. Also involved with uh disaster response, community support, stuff like this where we talk to um a folks for just kind of uh general information. We do trail outreach. So we go to the trailheads and and talk to folks about how they can be safe while they're out there. So they don't have to contact us. But the cool thing about search and rescue is that we can mobilize resources to take stress off of fire and police, right? So they can go to their vital tasks. We don't need a fire crew on mailbox peak for three hours trying to get somebody off of there because they have fires and heart attacks and other medical issues that they have to respond to. So I think that's a a really cool niche that we we can kind of fill there as well. And really, like Christine said, we're volunteers, but we're very well trained. We go through very rigorous training. And I will tell you, anybody who goes out on these missions is really, really dedicated to what they do. They really love it. So next slide, please. So adventuring smart and safe, really planning things out. Any one of us, we can be the most skilled, most prepared person in the world, go out on a hike or backcountry um uh adventure and still run into a problem, something that's unforeseen. You know, stuff happens, roll an ankle, right? Uh, and that's where we kind of come in, but having folks prepare for those adventures is really huge. So understanding what activity you're doing, where you're going, the weather, all that kind of good stuff and making sure that everybody in your party is ready for that. You know, you may drag along a friend who's never been in the back country, uh, and that sometimes can lead to not so great situations. Um, have plan Bs in place as well. So make sure you have a good plan and a backup plan. And like Christine said, sharing your your uh plan in detail with family or friends is really huge. Um, we've gone out on missions where they said, uh, yeah, they went hiking and they haven't returned, but we don't know what trail they went on. So now we have to search all the trails on I ninety corridor, find the car, and now we can start searching for the person. So that just leads to a much longer turnaround time, which is not great, especially if the person is in dire straits. So for ourselves, this training preparing, so as an adventurer, if you were going to go out, just make sure that you understand what skills you need. Are you going to go uh up into a high Alpine ascent? Do you know how to do rope and rigging? Uh, and staying within your limits. A lot of times we'll see folks who are like um a gorgeous day and they go up to a peak up at at the pass and they bring one tiny bottle of water and they're up there for hours in eighty degree weather and all of a sudden they start getting cramps, they're dehydrated, now it's getting dark. And they're like, how am I ever going to get home? And sure enough, that's when they call us and we scramble up there and try to get them moving and back home as quickly as possible. So understanding the ten essentials, we have some of that information over here. Uh, that's, it's really good. I do a an hour long talk on the ten essentials and we talk, we we tell cool stories about folks who had mishaps and how they were able to get out of it with our help and so. But some of the biggest uh things that we see is a really no light, uh, lack of water, proper clothing or navigation tools. I mean, we have Cherry Creek Falls right up here. It's a maze of trails. If it's might be as simple as just an app on your phone to download that app and download the map for that area so that you know, okay, do I take a left or right here? And the problem is if I get turned around up there and now it's dark, it's three times as hard to try to get your way out of that, right? So uh definitely, I know you folks are are familiar with that one area. And that's one where this example really holds true. Um, so even if you start out on a hike at ten A M, you might still want to carry the headlamp in case uh plans don't go according to to what you want. So anyway, uh, that's all I have. I'll turn it over to Josh. Thank you.
Yeah, so again, it's really great to be with you all today. I know this is a city council meeting. You have great um important business for the city. And you wonder, how does all this tie in? It ties in because as volunteers in King County, we're integrated into your communities. We'd love to see more of your local residents be involved in what we do. In fact, um, I think it was about a year and a half ago, Chris set us up with a scout troop here locally in Duval. We came out and met with them. We spent about six hours. We we helped them go through one of the merit badge clinics and learn everything that Tony was describing there um from a, you know, understanding search and rescue hands on. We have a really great partnership with um nine one one system here in King County. And um I don't know if we're allowed to say that there's a big surprise coming a little bit. Yeah, yeah. So there's um this is really cute mascot for King County nine one one, Emery the Penguin. And uh Emery stars in a video that will come out a little bit later this year. And it also stars some of our volunteers from search and rescue, including my twelve year old dog who uh that might have been his uh swan song for Sora, but it was great. So stay tuned for that. Somebody show your kids and grandkids and the kids in school. Um, but we will, um, I should told you, go to that next slide so that we can uh talk about the fact that we want people to know that nine one one is going to be a good tool for them and that recently the county launched the texting to nine one one as well. Um, because a lot of those places that people get to, you might not have great cell coverage, but you could still text. And so that's uh that's going to be one of those next big leaps for us um in search and rescue when people are able to uh communicate uh via the texting and having that um that access. Um, we also, when we get out into the public and we talk about uh during our community awareness and understanding what happens when you call nine one one originally, if you are able to identify that either you're lost or you have a medical situation or the people that you're in contact with do, they'll switch you to the King County uh special operations, which will we fall under for uh search and rescue. So um that's how we get enacted. Back in the day, we still carry these really big pages around and these really big radios in our car. These days, it's almost all done via our cell phones. We get the texts, uh, there's somebody sets up a map, tells us where we're supposed to go. It's amazing how much information. So when as search and rescue volunteers, you do not want us losing our phones. So that's a a big piece of what we do. Let's go to that next slide. Um, so here in the valley, um, we spend a lot of time uh both uh helping on on missions. Um, one of the dogs in our group, we um, I think in the last three years, helped find an elderly individual with Alzheimer's um right here in the Duval area. So we're, you know, we're glad to be of that service. More likely, we want to be able to do what Tony was talking about and doing that preventative search and rescue, be able to do the public education. We spend a lot of time also training in this area. Um, a lot of times when we're working our dogs, we need large tracts of land where we can be working the dogs off leash. Um, they're very well trained. I'll be interact with the community. But if you ever get any calls about um these people with these big uh foil covers over the cars and and dogs in the cars, those are, that's us. Uh, we're out there. We're making sure the dogs are well ventilated and and everything. Um, we're also um can assist, especially that four by four team and snow emergencies and helping uh assist people uh during one of our last big snowstorms, uh, that team helped get medical personnel uh through the roads and and out to the hospitals and the clinics. Um, and you know, we're, we're continuing to have those conversations of how can we continue to be a resource in emergency management for uh King County? We're a big piece there. Right now, we have a temporary headquarters that's located right across uh from Suomi Valley Hospital. Uh, we have a a trailer there that's been converted to um a classroom and meeting space. And then we have a lot of our county vehicles or unit vehicles that are parked there so that we have access to the I ninety corridor and up and down Highway eighteen. Um, and we are um currently looking at how to make our headquarters a permanent location. So you might be hearing more about that as we move through a a uh community. And I think I got one more slide here before I turn it back over to Chris. And I think I got one more slide here before I turn it back over to Chris. Um, Tony mentioned, we just wanted to give you the visual, you, I, I, hopefully you've all been up on the Cherry Creek Falls uh trail. That's beautiful location, it's a, it's an asset for your community, um, it's amazing how many people can get turned around up there. I think that in the last four years, we've had about ten missions uh up there, and it's all those things that Tony talked about, so we just want to let you know. We're familiar with the uh, any time something comes out from Cherry Creek Falls, pretty much the teams know where to go and where those trouble spots are, where to get folks. And um, again, we're happy to be here, then I'll turn over to Christine.
Okay. Yeah, uh, actually what you're seeing here, every, every one of those little red dots is in historic mission. Um, and the two photographs are um. Taken right at this position on the map. And that shows you the one on the bottom with the tree. If you look up there, high up on the tree, there's this itty bitty little sign that says TH with a tiny arrow going that way. And then if you go a little further down the trail, that's where you see that split and there's no signage that shows the person where to go. And so that's why they kind of, if they go to the left, they end up all drained down there where that whole group are red is. Anyway, um, you know, but, but frankly, it, you know, it's scary when it gets to be after dark and, and they don't know where they are and, you know, families with kids and. They thought they just went out for a really nice hike in the, in the close in forest, so. Um, we're concerned that this is something that, that might. Might need some looking, anyway, next slide. Um, okay, so this is kind of our, our, our general message whenever we're out in the community is how can you help? Well, as, as you've mentioned is, you know, stay safe. No matter whether you're going out on an adventure and recreating or at home. Have an emergency kit and know how to help take care of yourself and your, your, you know, hiking partners or your neighbors. Um, we always appreciate donations, whether they come from individuals or community groups or businesses. Um, and we're always looking for volunteers, it doesn't have to be somebody like Tony who carries heavy things and goes a long way up the trail and does amazing, you know, high angle things. We also have people that, that um aren't necessarily part of one of our units. Because, you know, it's a large uh volunteer organization, we always need people that know, you know, management and finance and um. All different sorts of skills, so um, we're, you know, in this day and age, technology, all sorts of things. Um, so volunteering comes in many forms. And that, that little QR code over on the left um goes to our website. And we have a couple more slides, one more. These are some of our long-term partners, we're, we're fortunate to get support from. From these uh I-ICOM radios and communication, the Snoqualmie Tribe. Uh, Carter Subaru has been a long-term uh donor. Uh, the, the land that we're renting or leasing our, for our headquarters right now is owned by the Snoqualmie Valley Hospital. Uh, State Farm has given us some wonderful grants, um. Next slide. And this is, this is one I'll leave at your leisure, the QR code actually goes to YouTube. It is about an eight minute video of featuring a couple of individuals. A couple of years ago that were uh rescued by King County Search and Rescue. And um, they've turned around and come back and are now volunteers and members of Explorer Search and Rescue. It's really a, a heartwarming story. So thank you very much for your time, and uh if you have any questions, we would. We can entertain them.
Yeah, do you guys forget involved, like, you know, what's going on in the playoffs now? Um, you guys get involved with that?
What happens, one of the things that the sheriff, deputy sheriff does. Is assess what the situation is. And if it is the type of incident going on where there could be an armed and dangerous person, no, we would not be involved. But I do know that the search and rescue unit in. In Shalane County has been helping to provide logistics to the. Professional law enforcement personnel and whoever else. Wearing uniforms and badges and carrying guns has been over there, you know, on the trail and whatnot, so, yeah. Uh, one of, one of the trainings that we receive is we are out, whether it be on the trail. Or in any other situation and we run across something that we consider. Maybe a little sketchy, like maybe a, an area that looks like it might be a campground, somebody has done who knows what. Is we're just, you know, back off, go tell our incident commander. And let the professionals take it from there. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for, I think uh what you were talking about with volunteers, a lot of people here search and rescue and they immediately think of the physical demands, that kind of work. But you have a lot of other volunteer opportunities and I was surprised by that, eleven, I think it was eleven percent urban statistic as well, um, so that's good to know, and I think it's bringing a lot more awareness to people wanting to volunteer. I was curious if um, you have the numbers of volunteers to residents to tourists? Do you know breakdown wise of your rescues, um? How many are from out of town or how many, I would just say, I know overall you're going to do more outreach, but I was curious if the focus would be more on residents or on tourism or just kind of?
You know, we haven't, we haven't been able to start tracking those demographics yet. Um, some of it has to do with privacy. Um, anytime we're dealing, especially with a person that has an injury, it, it becomes hip up. Um, uh, we don't take any demographics at all.
Well, I would say two things, one, anecdotally, I think it's a balance. Um, and as Tony said, a lot of those urban searches that we have with people with Alzheimer's dementia or vulnerable adults, those are all local residents. Um, the folks that are recreating, uh, most of them are also the local folks who know the trails, you know, uh, are getting out there. But I do know that like, for instance, um, one of the search, biggest searches I was on was for a father and son who were visiting here from Germany. And they just, they just got turned around out there. Um, so I think one of the things that we're trying to do is without delaying the, the. Um, privacy of individuals, but tracking those statistics, especially as we know how many people are visiting us. And as then we're thinking about with FIFA World Cup coming here, how many people else can be bringing out to our community? And all those people are going to want to see the beautiful sights in King County. And so one of the things that we're trying to coordinate and, and working with the local authorities with as well is what are the local plans and how, how can we be ready to help?
It's how to see a, a, a large and incredibly important organization, uh, curious. What kind of budget are you working with and what are your major funding sources?
Um. Right now, we do get some reimbursement from King County for actual operational expenses. Having to do with actual, you know, searches, uh, like fuel expenses and one thing and another like that. Um, I want to say, um. So I'm not sure about the exact level of, of budget, but you know, like I said, a lot of it, other than that is, you know, pure donation and grants and whatnot. Um.
I'd say most of the expenses that are incurred are by the volunteers themselves. Um, we have the nine member units, each, each unit is a nonprofit and raises money for specialized gear and equipment, training opportunities. Uh, for King County search dogs, we maintain a um, a pickup truck and a boat, uh, we have a boat to be able to do our water searching on. Um, and we bring in uh some. Experienced trainers to help us do some workshops throughout the year, but all the gear that we have, um, our backpacks, first aid kits, uh. Uh, you know, all the stuff that we, that's pretty much personally purchased as, as volunteers. And then the units will raise money for specialized equipment like radios, uh, some of the GPS uh equipment that we use. And some of the more advanced that Tony talked about, the bitters and uh bad emergency gear, that's all raised through the, like the State Farm grants and the, the differences like that. Um, so again, one reason we're doing these kind of interactions uh is to have those conversations, because we want to do. Want to grow the organization, want to have a proven headquarters, but we're going to have to enlist uh a community to be able to do that. We've been doing it on a shoestring budget, um, that's uh not strong as a bootstraps that we have. Uh, for a long time, but out of sixty years of being in King County, there are a lot of resources there in our community to be able to tap into. And the more that we can raise awareness, more conversations we can have about how that.
Well, thank you all for the support you do, the presentation.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
I did not just do. Impressed by anything, so.
And I, I was, uh, uh, pretty funny, but it closed it out, you sort of addressed my, I was curious how a hundred thousand was distributed between capital and operating, I think that was addressed. Um, sort of a comment, and, and you mentioned the ten essentials. You know, with the latest phones now, you know, providing satellite coordinates and other things, I would think, you know, one of the new ten essentials would turn people on. Oh, instead of the earphone doesn't, how does he say that?
I have two in my bag.
But I was curious, you know, you, you mentioned, and lots of great organizations, and I dive, and I was, you know, I do a lot of things less today than maybe I did when I was younger, but. Curious with all the regional organizations, whether it's mountaineers, whether it is even the mountain biking club, you know, locally that does a lot of time in trails, do you also? Uh, it seems like there's an opportunity for recruitment, either crossover, you know, not primary, but you have sort of a pool of folks that I imagine. You said it's partially recruitment and then also just retention as people age out or, or, or just, you know, family obligations.
No, come on, we don't age out, we just take jobs.
But uh, our people who go in the area, you know. That needs sixty-five minutes up there, they're here, so I like kind of watching the arc of the, our organization.
Yeah.
Um, but, but yeah, I see you sort of promote not just the, the cities and municipalities, but you also talk to various organizations in the area as well.
Oh, great, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just did a talk last weekend, oh yeah. And so we have a bunch of people who are interested in outdoors, my talk was, oh, I don't have to die in all this, right? Pretty catchy, a lot of people are interested in that, and so um, you know, you have people from that event coming up and talking and asking questions about how to get involved, the organization. So a lot of social media presence, so we even have, I mean, folks that we rescue. People turn around and join the organization as kind of a way of paying it forward, right? Uh, and I, I know like in, in Seattle Mountain Rescue, there, the folks who are more technically involved in Alpine, all that kind of stuff. Uh, a lot of them are involved in it because they know what they do is so dangerous. That they're almost banking good karma, so to speak. And, and the efforts of uh, you know, just making sure that the whole outdoor community stays safe and. So, so yeah, we're, we're really trying to push forward, I think, with, with our uh public engagement and, and trying to get out there and. One of the things we hope to get from that is, is, you know, folks to.
Yeah, and, and all of the different community, well, I'm not sure if we have any presence with your. Local, your festival that you just had a couple of weeks ago, but we try to get out to a lot of those kind of festivals and especially in the. Gateway communities where they, we know there's a lot of people that are recreationists and whatnot.
We would have, we had three missions to go out there.
You, yes, you were invited to our touch and track event, and when we found again, we would have been happy to have you all here, but you did have three missions that day, we totally understood. So you mentioned that Cherry Creek Falls is a little bit of a hotspot to use for, is there an area in the city? That you all need from us to make that a safer.
Really, the, the area where Cherry Creek Falls is, is land that, that's uh managed by the Department of Natural Resources. And I do understand that the first part of the trail is an easement through private property, so there's some sensitivity to that. And so I'm really not sure what DNR wants to do uh with it. Um, but certainly, you know, we feel the impact on search and rescue, we. Feel the impact on the subjects that, you know, have got lost and gotten scared and their kids are freaking out, whatnot. Um, so I'm not quite sure, you know, where the impetus is going to be to say, you know. Maybe even just a few little signs way back in the woods would be, would be okay. You know, even if you don't want to have a kiosk right at the beginning of the trail, type of thing, I don't.
Yes, I don't direction.
Uh, just to comment from me, uh, where I come from, I utilize search and rescue not much. Uh, more times than I do on account right now, um, and it's an urban environment. A lot of people don't understand that, uh, when people start walking, they can cover a lot of ground really quickly. Um, but fortunately, everything's done and set, so you've been involved in. Uh, where you're probably, a lot of them that you guys have deployed, they're out there. Somebody finds them in Seattle or someplace else kind of around, so uh I appreciate all the work that you do, I know that. It's uh sometime I think was gone, um, but I know that. Fifty-five years ago, I was in Smokey County Search and Rescue, it was exploring. Um, so I know exactly what people are up for, and I appreciate all the work you do. I know there's some areas that we have with water and stuff around here that are concerning for me. But I also know that one of the reasons it's going to make a success is the lack of the luck. Soon as people let us know, we're analyzing it, we're doing all the King County, let's say, here's what we have, and if they're usually. They're within a half hour, somebody starts to arrive, it's pretty perfect, so thank you for all of it.
I, I know our volunteers kind of have this competition between themselves about, you know, who can be out there. Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation, the information, and I really appreciate it.
And we'll just um leave some of the, well, just grab them.
We'll leave some cards up here for you, you know, some uh, you know, the, the.
Emergency blankets.
Okay.
I appreciate it, thank you. Uh, so our second um discussion of the evening, and I suppose there's no time for it, I think. Captain says city administrator, we thought this would be sort of intro, we'll get through what we get through, we can follow up in additional. Um, sections, um, we obviously had a really great. Discussion during the retreat at sort of a high level, sort of outline. Um, I sort of took the, the couple of weeks between, I, I fortunately didn't get to say with the Cynthia and Oscar Heatherman reviewed this, I just considered it the. A sort of a working graph, um, so really looking for feedback from other members of the council, where the apps are, areas that we want to sort of build out a little more, and then. When it's in sort of a, a, a little closer forum, I think that's when staff can, can take a pass, we can ask her review it. I think the, the other thing before we jump in, and John, if you could bring up just the, the, the copy or the, or Chelsea, the, so we can walk through the red line. Um, the other area that. Captain Henry reached out to me and I, we were kind of on the same wavelength, as uh, I had a separate document that I didn't include in the packet, is. This is a lot of the sort of rules of the road in terms of. How we should govern ourselves, I think that having, when we discuss the conversation and. You know, we found it's only as good as, as sort of folks, you know, adhering to it, their benupsh. Situation there the last couple of meetings, uh, where it showed us shows the pros and cons, but, but. You know, one item I found from Kirkland and, and, and Henry shared a great document, is a separate code of conduct document. Uh, Kirkland is a two pager, it is. And then the example you shared has a lot of specificity, but it's actually um. A requirement of each council member, board member and committee member sign it, so there's an affirmative action taken that you're going to commit to these, so. That's not part of this document, we have to, I added a decorum section, but I think. There's some value in exploring that as maybe a separate deliverable, like we do social media policy, you know, there's that we. Or the human resource work that, that, that we did Cynthia, um, that we sort of. Hold in, and again, it's, I'm not pushing anything out to the council, but um, that seemed like that might. Again, it's a tool, um, but allow us to add some additional specificity. So um, this first document was kind of where we started, I just, for folks who weren't in the retreat, gave me an idea, I went in, one of the topic areas was. Areas where we maybe want to revisit, uh, and so that's kind of where we started, and then. I took a lot of notes just by hand, based on the things we discussed, and then went into the existing documents, sort of. Turned on tracking, some updates, so you had an opportunity to review before the meeting, but I thought we'd walk through it here and, and get some feedback. Um, on the, I just to circle, circle back, I know that was actually brought up in twenty, like, spring of twenty twenty-one. Uh, council member, and there's an ethics document, I don't think they ever got incorporated, so as you walk through and. We're talking about where there's gaps, maybe that will, you know, think about that as well. City administrator, thank you.
So I did inherit a, I'm not, and I'm not really sure who marked it up, but I have a. Council Code of Ethics that appears to be a starting point for discussion and, and it would, it looks like it probably would have been in that timeframe, twenty twenty-one. And I'd be happy to kind of bring it forward with it as marked up and like you all, I'll bring it from there. Um, my initial impression of it when I looked at it was a little disjointed and probably. Um, to some degree, we're magneted, where symbols sometimes is.
Yeah, probably in two pages of like, pretty straightforward in terms of what you're expected to, to, to. How are you expected to treat each other and staff and people, but it's a single document, I'm sure there's other examples.
Yeah, so I'm happy to bring kind of what I have in the file and then something new. I said this council file for, you know, maybe Kirkland or others who looked at different ways to communicate the same information in a similar manner, but yeah, I'm happy to bring that forward. Uh, kind of starting voice.
I think it's always that.
Just as somebody who worked on that one, um, and it was actually, that's when we finally decided to pick it back up again. I think it originally came from twenty nineteen maybe, um, and then we just kind of dropped it and then we picked it up again and personal opinion, but everyone should look at it and determine for themselves that starting fresh might be the best direction, but yeah.
Yeah. And and that's, uh, one other thing I'll just mention about this graph is there's a lot of redlining is I and I wasn't as sort of great as Cynthia about bringing the examples forward. So I did borrow, a lot of this is not information I created, I borrowed it from other surrounding jurisdictions. Um, and then there's a couple, I just want to highlight a couple of things that I shifted position. So and then did some re-labeling of chapters that we had some, it was a little clear about what the material was covering. And then there were certain things even around like the roles and responsibilities, one example I gave was around the appointment of vacancies in council. It was way in the back, whereas we had a document that was like four responsibilities to council and we had four appointments. Well, why wouldn't we also have filling houses vacancies? So again, I I there's no, I'm not vested in this, so I just wanted to set the ground, like, you don't like it, if you want to reverse it, you know, I want, that's the feedback we need to get captured.
So I did have an opportunity to look at it before I left and I just want to express appreciation. Uh, the council procedures document that I inherited and worked on when I first got here uh, have been through multiple rounds of comments, questions, edits, and I think the goal in my first year was to get something done. Uh, and I think it's an improvement what we were able to accomplish, but the way you reorganized everything and clarified everything from staff perspective makes it a lot easier to know what our role is. And I really just want to offer appreciation. It reads a lot better than the prior.
So John, I know you or Chelsea, she's trying to see here, uh, if you want to just move down to the section where the, I guess, the red line. Well, we can realize it's like, oh, it's a little longer. Um, there's a whole lot in the, every time you cut and paste something, it stretches it all out suddenly because I modified the table of contents, uh, it pretty much all got. But I think the the key callouts here, I think, is is, uh, is the city administrator mentioned was I tried to like think of that in terms of and and there's a lot that didn't change. So the introduction and overview is primarily consistent. The the powers and responsibilities, I just rebranded it, I think, as general responsibilities and powers. Um, and then there was a couple of sections that referred to city council meetings, I think one was council meetings and one was city council. So I had like procedures versus administration, so it was a little clearer, but but as you go down on page five, the the first tab there, the real real changes, I think the first, yeah, change was in those, uh, powers and responsibilities and I powers and responsibilities of city council, and I just changed it to general powers and responsibilities and then labeled the first section, powers of the city council generally. And then the body of the text was was largely unchanged. I think the the first really change or really the only change in that chapter is, as as I said, I moved forward the, um, the process of filling out the list, so. But I did not change the actual process itself. And I think we we learned in this last round, we always have the power of adoption of of suspending rules and doing it differently, so. The the biggest change or it or or new block of information is really chapter three, and I think one of the items that sort of fed some of the conflict within council was the lack of clarity between council and staff with their own rules and responsibilities. But I also noticed when I moved into the section, there was nothing really defining the role of staff. We have a lot that defined council, the mayor, but there was nothing that either addressed the role of staff, how we interact with staff, and then also the role of the city attorney, which, um, so, um, I'm trying to think of the best way to sort of walk through this because there's obviously a lot of, a lot of text, um. And I also added a separate section for the city administrator, because I think we've gone through periods where the mayor was the primary base of the city. And then when when, uh, Cynthia, you came into this role, there was a a shift, but also just spelling out that what specifically, uh, I think it adds clarity in terms of the legislative and executive function, if you say what the role is and then what the role of hearing, then helps helps with that. I still think there's a probably and I think your example, and the Kirkland example also have around in the code of conduct also reinforcing the interactions between the council and staff in terms of expectations, um, so they're they're not mutually exclusive, um. But and I I do have notes, I will go back, a fair amount of this, I think, came, some came from Sumanish, some came from Swiss Palm, we had, I can pull them up, the references, um. They all had good examples. The other takeaway was no one actually had their procedures and documents were laid out exactly the same way. I think every city was different, um, in terms of what they choose to to emphasize. The city attorney in particular, that is a role and and it was in critical language in here that says it wasn't to perclude council from interacting in the city. Attorney, I think, was the, one of the items we talked about in the retreat was the difference between a legislative and political question, not necessarily political in the sense of political, but we're being sure of uh, whether it's to move forth with policy or trying to to butcher some point in terms of interaction. I think there's a fair amount of sort of like room there, but I think the key piece was by engaging with the city administrator or the mayor, when we do have these, it's both to focus the request to eliminate any potential duplication of the request, the information loss available. And also the acknowledgement that there's a clause associated with engaging with city attorneys, so to be fiscally responsible. Um, I don't know, I'll sort of pause there if there was like any, it just in the, in either the staff section or the city attorney where you felt that there was something that we we missed or should add, if there was something that was too restrictive or, um, and again, feel free to submit feedback to Cynthia, um, between the meetings on this, but I wanted to provide opportunities for for folks to.
I'm not finding your your red line, I go to the packets or.
We have, um, are you John, basically, he can cap, cap, encap me in the two documents, so it's that of, um.
There we go.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of like that section's pretty resonator, so there's a lot of red line.
So I also have, having, I mean, I would have to have it off. The couple of reflections that I have were, one, I agree, I I appreciate their patience, you put into the section in particular, defining the role of staff, defining the role of station, defining, um, those types of things. I appreciate that. As you said before, I mean, we all, we have to govern ourselves also, and there's a certain expectation that we're all adults and we have a base accordingly. And and sometimes that may not happen, and those certain rules is getting, you know. And so for that stuff, I feel like we, I I noticed that there was one point and this was a point of discussion after one of the meetings, but whether whether or not the mayor could remove councilor in front of the meeting. It did say that the mayor can have in 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 a section in address the public. It said the mayor can remove people wishing thieves uh, members of the public or members or or by red council members if, uh, behavior is not becoming a problem. And so I thought that being in the public session is a little bit confusing. Um, and so maybe that could be picked up, maybe, if it's appropriate for the mayor to do that, which I'm not sure.
Yeah, and that's actually a separate sort of just pause, because I think we will need to revisit that, but yeah, there's information section, I think there was a, there was some feedback that wasn't, you know, that Oscar provided. Uh, even around sort of, and and the the bigger gap we have in our, you know, procedures and also the part, we normally have, and there was a section I added, like we don't really have a, a, a you know, strike one, strike two, strike three, there wasn't a language. So that sort of I added, and even there was a big warning, a a verbal warning, a written warning, and then some type of sanction. I think Oscar did clarify meeting that because of the elected official, and and I think the G team sort of clarified this, that there's a question of public safety or threat or bodily harm. There was an mechanism to sort of get to remember person or sort of public speech or speech you don't agree with. And I think this is where you circle back where it's a conduct, like there's a physical conduct versus to your point, it's like when a council member doesn't respect the rules and order in terms of the stop talking, that's kind of hard. And and so city administration, I don't know if you have a few that day, but I think that could be one of the reasons.
And so we've had the opportunity to look at the issue of what to do when meetings, for whatever reason, become chaotic and are no longer productive. And the rules around calling recess, uh, folks getting up and leaving, so there's no more space in the room to continue the engagement is where we would look at. So um, there are a couple of things and I can, um, we have to make council members reissue this. We looked at this, um, back in summer of twenty three, when we had a pretty contentious council meeting, what do you do if you get out of control for whatever reason? So you can call recess, stop the meeting. I think we probably need to revisit what recess is.
Yeah.
Um, and so an effective recess is not only that the meeting stops, meaning we're not taping, the meeting effectively ends. Business isn't being discussed, but recess means people get up, leave, you're not engaged anymore. Because at some point you start violating the open public meetings act if the business continues. You should be getting up, excusing yourself to whatever corner of the room. Or alternatively, if the public engagement in a manner that makes the meeting uncomfortable or chaotic, you can also recess and reconvene the meeting in another location. So we're in a sense of we're having a meeting here. But we really have business that needs to be done, want to reconvene the meeting. It could be that we go to the police department's conference room there to reconvene the meeting if we need business to occur, but we don't, um, have it open to the public for, that's, you know, fairly extreme. But we probably should revisit like plan A and recess, plan B and recess, and and get clear about what happens.
And so I.
I think that includes, you can also table in specific items, something agenda, the item I changed before, they said there's two reasons that might be like, let's postpone that issue, let's as you said, I think that this challenge last time had to be disengaged or deescalated by moving people apart. And then that was the third one, and she said this physically relocated into a different, different space.
And I've been in council meetings for a kind of a little sideways, necessarily here, but it's, excuse me. But I think there's a period of rule when I take this meeting, one as a subject matter, as far as we talked about, but also to protect the safety of individuals in council, whether it's somebody from the public that they're unfortunate, like to someone from council. Uh, I know that words and speech is important. But I also know that there are certain things that can be triggered by those processes. And so my role not only is to be some, kind of be almost starting with arms, but I I kind of have that role, uh, like that direction of the air, the city, the process. But I also will not let somebody here get hurt. Um, I know that verbal occupation is in place. But sometimes it's not necessarily a threat against somebody else, it's a verbalization of feeling that somebody has. And when it becomes criminal is when you right, or in that case, or when there's any type of effort to engage physically with somebody, I will step down to protect the people here. I don't have a process. But it is also the aspect of I don't control the meeting, mayor, you control the meeting. Um, and so I do weigh heavily on the actions that it takes. Uh, the mayor takes a recess because it's uncontrolled. Or there needs to be a break or something, but it's not, I still am here, I'll still walk before long. But I also have noticed that sometimes when we go to recess, it continues, right? And that's where the council has to govern themselves, that process, when a recess is called, truly it's to just do that separation, allow court heads to work on the process and not to to choose the endation of processes. So I'm here at your service, uh, and going through that process, but uh, ultimately, there are numerous times that I will apologize to that, but it's stopping, so I'm generally rushing through my process.
And and I think to your point, uh, Cynthia and Eric have also, or even I think what she said is the direction to this first, or, you know, where it take recess, everyone get up from the table and where where I think that a little nudge sometimes would would help. And and I think, as you said, we there's a little bit of that, we have a section in the procedures around sort of council decorum, we, I'm sorry, uh, public comment decorum, we didn't have anything specific to council, which is what I added, but the direction from Oscar was also like, there were schools that can be applied to the public, which were a little different than what you could apply to an elected official, which has a a right to be in the meeting. Like you really can't, I think, ban a council member from uh, in in the moment you can, but you couldn't like permanently ban that, or things like that. So again, feedback, if we can, enjoy those good examples from from other cities. I I know the other area that would have been some of the the tension was around some of the information requests. And that was the other area that I focused a little more time on, um, and was, and I think that the, and 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 Cynthia and John and I talked about a little bit, I think, we need to be able to speak of it, but was rent around that one hour limit, one hour, two hour, whatever we say is sort of the threshold for for council approval. And then really differentiating between like, what is a simple information request, you know, I noticed that the, a new sign is one in, and you ask Steve or or are you a question? And and you can answer it in the moment. It's like really simple versus a something that you need to formulate a policy versus a, um, an agenda. So I moved back from the meeting preparation section up into the information request section. And then really the fourth one that I have, I've seen cities that have like nine or 10, I think it's a little random. Um, but in terms of like, you're 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 forwarding your request to staff. So at that point, like when does your responsibility end in terms of follow up or handoff versus you're really a steward or a vessel for sort of moving that request forward? And and there shouldn't really be an expectation per se that you're going to continually uh, be kept moving back to you.
I just can't say up to where we are now, I have no personal, um, you know, edits or suggestions. I really like everything that you did a lot. It, you know, it's hard because we don't want to create so many rules that we're just stuck and we can't do anything, but there's been a lot of need to clarify. Um, but I also agree that, you know, some of the issues we've had, rules are not going to get us out of, we really have to uh, make sure we're following through on this. But going through it is really helpful because it reminds us of the procedures and as we change them, I think it's good to do it every year and go through them and figure out what's working, what's not. Um, I really especially appreciated the, um, city attorney, no, no, I think he's on it. I just, yeah, um, the city attorney, some, something in there was really oh, just reiterating the point that, um, the client is the city and that, you know, needing to provide representation to all the branches and also I think it's good because we've, we've talked about this quite a bit over the last like eight years is should we have a process for council to contact the city attorney? You want, everyone has the right to do that. Um, but do we, how do we make sure we're keeping a tab on how much that bill is, you know, I mean, there is a real cost to that. So I think that's a fair pathway is to just make sure you're checking in with the mayor earlier before you reach out to the city attorney. I generally do that. So because I I just want to make sure maybe Cynthia can answer my question and I don't need to do that, you know, so, um, that's kind of what I've done, but I I think if everyone's doing that. maybe Cynthia can answer my question and I don't need to do that, you know? So, um, that's kind of what I've done, but I, I think if everyone's doing that, it'd be really good.
Yeah, go ahead. I was gonna add, I'm, I'm looking to this and to the information request. It might be uh, beneficial needs to have a line there, but the council members know that they might not get a first class response, but there's questions to answer. Just to clarify that.
Yep.
Cause that's.
Yeah, and I didn't go into detail in either defiling them either, like the simple versus research. I did probably language that would clarify it, you know, a sentence for each one, how, how that was skewed. But I do think a lot of our issue, I think, issue, some of the issues that have come up have been around the, the affectation gap. And then so, so obviously clarify, yeah, basically. Um, that's.
Just while we're on it, if that's okay for information request, something that had come up in the last couple of years is if someone in the body would argue that they think the time on spent is accurate. Um, so I don't know if we need to address that in here or just to make the body aware of that. I think, you know, if staff is saying that would estimate, you know, I'm estimating that would take me, that this triggers it and it needs to come to council.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's a fair path, um, to get to it as it comes to council, because then we can all authorize it. But that has been something that came up in the last years is an argument over, I don't think it would take that long and I should get this. So, um, I just, I don't know how to deal with that other than it just comes to council and then we can decide and, and it goes from there. But just to make you aware of that as a potential issue.
And I think that's a simpler, you know, I do the broader form back to the staff section and sort of the questioning, get the professional, actually staff would argue a little bit in terms of the estimate. But I think the solution you suggest, kind of you have to cancel, circumvents that conversation because then you get, it's a, it comes to council decision. You want to go after that.
Um, well, I wanted to add to the previous plan of city attorney. So I review the bills every month. And there's a section on, um, you know, public works, planning, executive services, which is myself and the mayor, legislative services. So I can see every phone call that's made to the city attorney and how long it took. Um, and so you, one thing that you all might consider doing is, and I'm happy to provide it, is if you want every quarter, every year, your cap payout to get a sense of an accounting, so I don't provide it to you, but I can easily provide what the legislative, the homeowner for city attorney services, because it's broken up by the function of the advice.
Yeah, that would be.
Very helpful.
Part of that sort of oversight of ourselves, I think, you know, in terms of what we're extending. And then the, I didn't see on here, I, I do some things in here. This is probably the least specific because John and I chatted a little bit about how we might be able to provide some transparency, transparency. I think this went a little to your expectation that it's tracking. And I know Kelsey and John, it's sort of a little bit different, maybe lightly, they used to track some of those things. Again, that was a suggestion, because I think, again, I'm not creating work that hasn't come to council. Um, but, uh, I know you're doing some brainstorming, so we'll kind of wait and see what ideas come back with. And the intent there is also to take weight off your plate around having your visit and sort of follow up on their bus if we could sell sort of city administrator.
Um, so Kelsey, John and I were able to meet today to figure out what would be cost effective and get to, um, what I think the goal is. So we have our public, uh, interface for public workers requests. We could do kind of some test cases in how to create a council request um, that acts like a public workers request where the, um, name of the request or time, et cetera, would be logged. It would necessarily show the request and the response that we could, uh, so we can W M with all options and show it to council. So I think there's a way we could do it without buying a handy platform. Um, so we talked about that, you know, I used to create a log first year, it's there, every request I got from council for requests or response, follow up response or response. And honestly, it took hours, um.
Yeah, I don't think that's what the ask was. It was like, here's the request and I answered it up.
And honestly, I don't think council found it useful really, other than to read it and say, oh, here are all the requests. I don't want to speak for you all, but um, I didn't hear any council member come back. I love this blog that you're creating. Um, so we would want to look for something that's a little more time efficient. Uh, the other thing I would say is I need to create process and more transparency. I want personally say I would hate for that to come at the expense of you all feeling like you've got the bump. And so I don't want every time you all have a question to get into this mindset that if we put together this um, kind of an online portal, that the only way you can connect with myself before the clerk's office is through this portal. And that's not, um, not ideal, so.
Yeah, and, and I think I kind of heard that, we talked about this a little bit, because it, you know, there's something I think that, that you said that in the moment, that you like, don't want to let process get in the way of of, of efficiency. And at the same time, if the process is only designed to sort of, uh, it, you know, solution in search of a problem.
That wants to turn my interest on.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I, I think we talked about that a little bit too. It was really trying to, you know, whether this is a one off, because I think ultimately the, the consensus I've heard about council is want to get back to sort of the regular order of business where you're the primary the engagement point and, and we're not operating sort of on an exception. So the, the only value I saw in logging is that we did see abuse had provided visibility to the broader council, but there's other ways potentially that could be brought back to pencil separate and part from a log. So again, over there, any suggestions?
I mean, I, I, I wouldn't be okay with something as simple as, and if it comes to you in the form of email, if, if, if there's a simple response, like this has been received and these are our next steps, like that's enough for me. I mean, then there's acknowledgement, you've got it. And next steps are this is a long quest and we have to get approved, it'll show up on the agenda or city staff is going to look into this and if it works its way into PowerPoint next week. Or like, tell me that, I'm good, you know, I, I don't think it needs to be more complicated. I don't need a full tracking log and ticket tracker, you know.
What's one you have?
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I think my, I always worry if anyone who's been a, a business owner or deals with email, which is like everybody, you know, one email can like just totally side rally your whole day. And, but I mean, that will have to be on staff's side, you know, if things, you know, just because you get an email doesn't mean you have to drop everything and deal with that email. But I recognize that, like your own management of how you deal with that. Um, but there have been times where it can be numerous requests and often it's easy to be like, oh, it's easier to take care of this right away. So I just want to make sure whatever system we're using, that staff is able to compartmentalize it and, and work on it when you want to work on it. But like I said, I think that's more in your realm of how you manage that. Um, but I think we just want to be aware of that. Um, I always, I typically will add something like, no reply needed, or I'm just sharing, or I don't need a response, or, um, you know, I might email at 10 P M. at night, but that's just because that's when I'm working on it, because it's not my primary job. So, um, I think whatever we figure out, I, I agree with the log. I mean, it's, it's a neat idea if there was something simple, but, um, my hope is to, I mean, it's just the basics, you know, and just those expectations maybe more than anything else, but.
And maybe they, I mean, you could even, again, we'll just sort of refer, I, I know John and stuff mentioned like, you know, this one, which is a lighter way to work. Or the campfire pilot was from City, you know, it was pretty tough, uh, was slick, but it was basically, you know, had a couple of notes. But, you know, maybe just for legislative requests, or we decide what the arbitrary order is. But I do think there's some value in terms of like public work responding, you can send it out an email, like just to know you go to the portal on here and others, and, and maybe that's the criteria. Information requests that are just simple information, we get, you know, go to U N N, you may get a decision, this really isn't a simple information requests, but legislative, but again, that was not to constrain, I just wanted to throw it out there and, and, and I'm all for that. Email can just become sort of like a lot of this, and particularly the way Outlook works where it depends all responses, you can lose track, but, but again, well, there's not a fine turnaround on here. Uh, this was sort of just, you know, as we're thinking about part of the process, it was a, a tool, so.
One thing, I think one of the most important things to me that if I send an email with a question, I want to make sure all the council gets the response to. So whether that's like you were saying, it's, it's going to show up in the slideshow or something. Um, I, I don't just want a response just to me. Everybody needs to know everything. We need to be sharing information. We can't, obviously to a certain extent, right? We have to be careful with the email, but if there's going to be a reply from one council member, maybe it's to reply all to the entire, you know, council, but the reminder to not reply all have a discussion or.
Um, and I think that, again, question sort of review, I think you got some clarity in your directionally
on that one, uh, council, you know, I had one other thing that gives us this presentation that, that I wanted to mention was what I saw in the presentation, I mean, in the procedures is that council members are not allowed to ask other council members questions. So, but that's not something that has to be the case for interns. And actually, so.
Yeah, I have the two question comments in there.
Yeah, to me, and again, to me, it makes sense to be able to ask one of the questions, could be, there's a reason not.
Yeah. So, so there are one, one thing that I sort of, I'm paying attention to time, and this is, we don't have to get through this at all. The only, before we jump on the back, was the other item that was a little bit of a change. And it was, came up in the last council meeting, so I wanted to include it here. There was a item called scheduled, uh, items which included the mayor report, the city council report. I added a section for the city administrators report, which is the staff section. One of the things I noticed in that is that while that is designed to be an opportunity to ask staff questions related specifically to the report, it morphed into a discussion. And that is not the intent of that section. It is a report out to the body and it's not to open up additional items. So I added some clarity just in there that, um, for discussions, basically you could ask when you, you open it up, are there any questions? And it's like, oh, I saw this, I think this is fine. But if we got into like either you want to present information that's not your report, or you want to get into a discussion about the information, that is an agenda item and that needed either to be added to the agenda or that's where the good of the order comes into play and we get deferred to the good of the order and we've discussed it at the end of the meeting. So I wanted to see if that was okay in terms of the council moving in that direction. Um, the two points you, you raised, I, I call that and I stepped notes on that because to your point, um, the, the, there was, I, I did go back and add the question, the clarified question. The Robert rule says that you can in fact engage other members of the council for a small body, which we're considered, it's less than fifteen members. So you can in fact have that. And still the same rules apply in terms of it not being personal, not referencing past actions. But if, if you make a point and I have a question about that point, that simply mattered, the council deciding that we want to do it, um, to do it that way versus sort of addressing everything to the, the chair. You know, the other comment I had in there was that there's a question that we talked about this a little bit, the difference between sort of the question rounds and then debate rounds. Um, whether there's any value in sort of the separating those out, because I know some cities will have like it's two rounds of question or unlimited questions, which can be able to ban it, but then only two rounds of debates. Or, um, most of the time we sort of wind it together, but like, to your point, there's, this is our document, so we can define that interaction. And, and so I, I didn't have objections to asking each other questions, but the current procedures, and I don't know if city administrator, if you have any guidance from, or, or John, for a proper measure procedure, if there's a reason of value of doing it one way or the other.
Um, I don't know that I have a bit mean about asking council members questions, because we in general, um, so, so here's what I would say, um, if staff are presenting something that requires a certain level of expertise, um, the questions would likely be best administered by staff. I guess a little bit.
Okay.
I, I think for me, if it's more of, you know, let's say a council member says something and I have a question about like a clarifying question, what did you mean by that? Can you explain more of that type of question? I mean, I personally am okay with that because I want to understand more. Where it's odd and we need to stick to procedure on being called on by the chair, though I know that was kind of something as well that was up in the air a little bit, um, is making sure that before that council member answers the question, that the chair recognizes that council member to speak. Otherwise it turns into this back and forth and, and you know, I think on, you know, for the most part, that's okay and our can handle that, but I also think it can kind of spiral and say, we just have to maintain the orders that everyone gets a chance to speak, I think is the main concern. So I think as long as you know, they, the person who's being asked the question waits for a question from the chair to speak. Uh, to me, I don't.
And, and I think that's where it came into this difference between question and debate, because the, the clarifying question versus your, and I think it's even, when you get into the debate, that is really in our council discussion. The, the mayor is the one orchestrating that discussion, but she's not necessarily participating. And so, but, but it is odd that, you know, you're sitting here and we should be being here, but the person who has the question, uh, is sitting next to you, that, that I think it's, it's a framework and it's not going to be perfect. So I think your point is we ultimately have to, to be, uh, recognize, uh, how that conversation is going, keep it limited, not become a debate session, but, but it sounds like there's not an interest in necessarily separating that. It's just basically uh, relaxing the rules a little bit, but also holding each other accountable.
I don't think that'd be a favor. Council members asking questions directly to the council, they're just.
Without getting acknowledged.
I mean, you're going to be, some of them are going to have to be reprieved. I mean, this is what it's going to be.
So I didn't change it. I just put the comments in the, in the margin if we wanted to revisit those. So, uh, and I think we didn't get to the, the, the whole sort of the forum piece, which is probably okay for tonight, because I think that we can revisit it with a good conduct piece, but at least wanted that.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it takes time to get to.
And then, and then, you know, ready, you can continue to mark up and, and mind your own, they're asking, I know it's supposed to be a limited opportunity to get ideas, you know, share them, uh, capture them in sentiment as we would for any other agenda, I definitely question that. And we'll consider this a liberty option, and so we feel formal law could be in council and appreciate. With that, uh, we want to have a little break. Uh, going to call the council hall to close at six fifty seven P M. And we will, uh, reconvene at three after. You have one you read? Flight from the Duval City Council to order uh for June seventeenth, twenty twenty five at seven oh three A P M. Uh, can everyone stand uh in talks with? Budge allegiance to the black in the United States of America, the huge order complex, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and ever changing justice. Uh, can you call it off or?
Yeah, uh Mayor Rupert Hender. Mayor Prince Tom Mercer.
Here.
Councilmember Owen.
Here.
Councilmember Schaper.
Here.
Councilmember McHenry. Eric, councilmember Supple.
Here.
Councilmember Naplin. Councilmember. Here.
When uh, I can imagine, for I believe he was going to be out since night, didn't expect an excuse, and councilmember Naplin, we didn't. And it all of it shows in graphic. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Uh, is there a motion to adopt uh?
Some of.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? So it's adopted, and we have two proclamations this evening. Uh, the first is for uh Juneteenth. Juneteenth observed handily on June nineteenth commemorates the day in eighteen fifty five, when Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Dallas from Texas and informed enslaved African Americans of their freedom more than two years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commem- commemoration of ending slavery in the United States, representing a pivotal moment in our nation's journey toward justice, equality, and freedom for all. Its significance is particularly poignant in the context of the current social justice movements, serving as a reminder of the work that remains to be done. And whereas the city of Duval recognizes that the history and contributions of Black Americans are deeply woven into the fabric of our country and our community, and that the acknowledgement of this history is essential to creating a more equitable and inclusive future. And whereas Juneteenth is not only a celebration of freedom, but also a time for reflection, education, and action, an opportunity for all residents to learn from the past, honor the resilience and cultural richness of Black community, and renew our commitments to actually injustice. And whereas the city of Duval, as a beacon of progress and equality, is committed to standing in solidarity with our Black neighbors, listening to their voices, learning from their experiences, and supporting efforts that dismantle systemic racism and promote racial healing. Our commitment to this cause is unwavering. We encourage all residents to join us in this fruitful work. And whereas by recognizing Juneteenth, we affirm that the story of New York is incomplete without the full inclusion and acknowledgement of Black history's struggle, triumph, and contribution. Now, therefore, I, in the area of Oklahoma, and the mayor of the city of Duval, would be here live for coming June tenth nineteen twenty twenty five as Juneteenth. In the city of Duval, I encourage all residents, community organizations, and local institutions to honor this day with appropriate programs, activities, and reflections that foster understanding, promote unity, and advance the cause of liberty and justice for all. Uh, New Year for the. And the second proclamation is for Small Cities Month. Small cities and towns under fifty thousand population are the home of millions of Americans and constitute the vast majority of unique values across the United States. And whereas small cities and towns with their unique character and charm strive to strengthen their communities due to provisions of essential services such as healthcare, education, and public safety, as well as programs that promote cultural, social, and economic development, all aimed at improving the quality of life for all residents. And whereas the federal government through programs such as the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program provide crucial funding for local projects and initiatives. And whereas state governments and partners in success of small cities and towns, and should, I'm sorry, are partners in the success of small cities and towns, and should be encouraged to continue to support key programs and legislation that strengthen the communities. And whereas organizations, businesses, and residents are partners in the success of small towns and cities, it must be encouraged to continue to grow their efforts to make small communities a viable choice for people to live in. And whereas during these challenging economic times, the need for a renewed governmental partnership to support essential public services is more important than ever to ensure the safety and growth of small town America. And whereas the National League of Cities President and the Small Cities Council of the National League of Cities has declared June twenty twenty five as Small Cities Month. Now, therefore, I, in the area of Oklahoma, and the city of Duval, would be here live for coming June twenty twenty five as Small Cities Month. In the city of Duval, we encourage the current federal uh administration, Congress, and state governments, organizations, businesses, and all residents to recognize this event and work together this month, and throughout the year, to invest in small cities and towns, develop the lives of all residents. So do you have any comments for the audience this evening?
We don't. I think this person signed up for every Tony panic.
Okay, he was.
Yeah, he was. I just wanted to make sure, otherwise, nobody uh signed up to speak their problem.
And so you issued, decide if you have to read this, if you don't have any uh.
Um, we do not need to read it every meeting, um, unless.
And you have anyone who didn't sign up? That's the thing, I'm going to say my voice. This evening, um, do we have motions to agree with the consensus agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Alright, uh, that's our consensus agenda is adopted. And we move on to uh escape items for the evening, the first being a miss report, and there is not here this evening, so there's not a mayor's report. Uh, so without all of it over to city administrator McNabb, or the city administrator.
Great, thank you, everyone. Uh, thank you to council and members of the public who are here and maybe watching. So yeah, McNabb, city administrator. Uh, excellent, I'm going to turn it over to our city engineer to give the public works update. They're so great now.
Thank you, um, good evening, council, um, yeah. Uh, so some updates, some really cool updates. Uh, the Microsoft uh connector stop that's doing the on-street pickup on Third Avenue near um North Hill, or I'm sorry, North Hill, near Goodwill Brothers is being well received. There are more people being just out there than at that holy unison's church, so um they're really happy with it. Um, next slide. Um, in other business, uh, King County Metro is adding a route here in Duval that will service between uh U Dev Bothell and Duval, stopping in Cottage Lake and Woodenville along the way. Um, that's going to start on June twenty first. And it'll be picking up by Ace over a stopper where that's way over there on Brown Avenue.
Excellent.
Uh, and Route two two four, the Dart, will also expand its service. Um, so starting September first, they are going to move their layover that's currently on Brown um down to uh Main Street, just north of the intersection of Big Rock Road. They'll come down, they'll go around the roundabout, and they'll come and do their layover here. After their layover is done, their first stop of service will be um just to the north where that green dotted. So that's really exciting as well. Um, next slide. So an update on the depot building, the water leak that occurred in May due to the broken toilet fill line. Um, the damage includes flooring and some and possibly some wall uh damage. Uh, work began on Friday the thirteenth to demo and remediate the water damage, including mold abatement. Uh, the reconstruction will occur after the work, the abatement work. Uh, laminate floors has a positive for asbestos, which requires special handling and demolition. Um, and then insurance handles the project with us, and we have a five thousand dollar.
I'll add to that really quick. Uh, so as some of you may know, the wives do does their summer camp, and they come to take over the depot somewhere. Um, but we showed them the Rose Room this morning. We didn't took them on a tour, so they will be starting to set up this Friday in the Rose Room. They're actually really excited about uh Rose Room as kind of their place um for the summer, a little more room in the depot, and we did tell them to be gentle with the restroom facilities. It's two of an own building. Um, and there's a little office that um has, I I went uh two summers ago, I set up a work, we are all working here. So they're going to use that um little office as their storage area for equipment. So they will be operating out of Rose Room this summer. Um, we're hoping to get the depot building up soon. You know, viewing it as an opportunity to give some love um to to the depot building. Um, but yeah, the moldiness, that's supposed to be a little bit of surprise. It's a little longer than we thought.
Um, so uh, update to our transportation impact fee work. Uh, we worked recently with Transpo to update the transportation plan and the twenty year project list. Uh, with that came, uh, we wanted to ensure that our our land use and our targets and everything that we modeled was locked in. Once we did that, we um started working with Transpo outside of the adoption um to get uh an updated traffic impact fee. Um, that fee uh draft does look larger than what it is currently right now at eleven thousand three hundred eighty nine dollars. But before we bring it to council, we want to work with F C S to ensure that we've covered all our bases, and we're looking at the methodology and marks W, we're doing it right. Um, so that work should be completed and brought back um in sometime in August.
Welcome. If you want to mind me, because I cannot read that part.
Yes, 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 yeah. Um, so community development update, uh Adventure Church, uh Community Church is going vertical. This is a picture of the site they have their foundation in, and they're starting their framing. Um, it caught on fire, the original structure in twenty twenty three. Uh, the project will comprise a two-story structure with site and frontage improvements. So frontage improvements on all three um road fronts, which is exciting. Uh, where everything completed steadily and is estimated to be completed by late twenty twenty five, early twenty twenty six. Next slide. And planning commission recommended approval to the city council at their June eleventh meeting regarding the twenty twenty four comprehensive and update. Uh, planning staff is working on building out their remaining land use applications to be added to the Open Gov permitting portal. Uh, planning, the middle checklists are also being updated to align with new state statute requirements, which is a really big lift uh for the parents. Uh, and we anticipate having uh all land use applications and checklist updated and live by the end of the summer. I think that's all. So we'll turn it over to the city clerk's office for a few updates.
Uh, good evening, council, uh, I'm their city clerk. So box getting has fallen. Uh, we started seeing the first boxes creep in. Uh, there are going to be a lot of final two hundred and fifty seven. Hi, oh, dear. Okay, you get the pitch. Uh, so uh, we also contacted Washington State Archives to see if they can pay some of the stuff that is required for permanent storage so that they can scan it and make it available on the the state archive website. Uh, more of that come in the future. And we're also working on a SharePoint uh with information that would not only be useful for staff. I know that there have been questions about, for example, something as opposed to employee directory. So rather than having to update a a spreadsheet every few months or so, we'll just have it on SharePoint where it will be updated the minute we get an update. And uh, everyone can reference it, uh, can go on, uh, if they need an extension or a cell phone number, whatever it is, it'll be available there, agenda bills and all that good stuff. Uh, will be available on a SharePoint page for the city clerk's office. And more of that to come at a later time. Thank you.
And I'll turn it over to Beth for updates of the finance department.
Hey, Beth McManus, my name is Director. Um, so I'm fortunate enough to find my finance manager to uh, you know, some finance, it's camp, we're focused in by our S D. It is an amazing resource, especially for small cities. Don't have a lot of depth to their teams to train and understand. So they do a deep dive into all things finance, processing, um, requirements. Uh, just it's an amazing experience. I was able to attend last year, right when they got, it was perfect for me. Uh, so this was really great. We're looking forward to our finance director or finance manager being to share all that he's learned. It's a very small group, it's like thirty five uh participants. Um, so and it's representatives from other small cities, so we learn what we're doing well and feel confident, but also what we could do to improve that maybe hadn't thought about. So it's a really amazing resource taught by the M R S C staff that have a longstanding history working in and working with um small cities, so.
And then finally, a couple of updates for me that I put in here before uh leaving for the weekend. Um, so we have some key meetings coming up that I wanted to share with the city council in case you all have issues that you would like me to bring um to these meetings. So the first is the Department of Local Services, um, is coming on June thirtieth, or no, they're coming in July to meet with me. Uh, so in case you don't know. Uh, so in case you don't know, the Department of Local Services is the agency in County. That operates of all of the services between, say, us and Carnation, so all those unincorporated areas. So they're coming to talk about the services they provide to the unincorporated areas that are contiguous to cities. And where we might build connection, where we have some needs. So if there's anything that you all would like to talk about or have concerns with. The agency that offers services to our unincorporated areas between, say, us and Carnation, us to this enormous quarter. Um, throughout the valley, please let me know and I'll be sure to bring those issues, uh, to that meeting, we have the director and their manager coming. Uh, to that meeting in July. The second is the South Cities Association Executive Director, so they have a relatively new executive director in that agency. They're coming to Duval on June thirtieth to talk about the city, we'll show them around the city and to focus largely on things that impact small cities. Uh, within the South Cities Association. And again, if there's been policy issues, I know some of you are on the pick committee. Um, oftentimes, some cities get kind of drowned out by the bigger voices in the room and, uh. And oftentimes, the agenda for South Cities Association is focused on things that are probably more predominant for some of the big cities. So this is an opportunity to talk specifically, but it's F C A about things that are specific to Duval or specific to small cities. Uh, our Port of Seattle money was officially approved, so the music crawl is currently being planned, so looking forward to that. And we, um. You know, we're testing the theory that we have talented kids in Duval, we've got quite a few submissions for, uh, the talent show summer stage. So the, uh, we're going through those, so we sent to the Cultural Commission. And then Cultural Commission is having an audition in our new little, um, build out in the park. Uh, at the beginning of July, so we're really excited to see what that will look like and to test it out there too. Um, and I think that's it for now and happy for me to answer any questions or anybody who's attending.
On the depot building, I was just curious, I'm assuming the re- the flooring is getting, I, I was curious if it was gonna be all wood or just replace the linoleum or I, I was. Cause I know we were also looking at grants for refurbishment, so it's kind of about trying to get any, I was. Well, we're gonna take it as an opportunity for good timing, um, so what we would like to do is refurbish it to something that's. Probably not to its full historical life, but something that represents the historical look throughout is the ball. Um, if you have been in the depot building recently, there was a old kitchenette movies, um. Doors that kind of opens and, uh, it's a real opportunity to have a few, few new things there. And all have to be ripped out.
New ones, new ones.
New things, um, but in a big, a new refrigerator that isn't from the seventies that's actually cool. Um, but because the flooring has to be pulled out completely, all of that infrastructure has to be pulled out too, so. We're viewing it as an opportunity to have that be, um, place that actually will, uh. Be an, an attractive place for people to go.
Function, functional, functional and attractive.
Any questions for city management or chef, uh, councilman role, the, the plan for the music crawl, are, are we keeping that all July or we have a sense that it's it?
We don't have a summer date yet, so the way it worked last year was a little, um, heavier plan for August. Because we have summer stage in July, so my stance is, is going to be end of July, August. And then we've also asked this part of our request to the Port of Seattle and the presentation that was made here in council. For there to be a focus on children's, um, entertainers so that we can, uh, have, uh, more. Not, not that any of the musicians weren't family-friendly, they were all family-friendly, but that they could be marketed specifically to children, um, which I consider, so. Uh, more to come on that as it gets planned.
Any questions? Um, so I'll bring this to council reports, do any council reports this evening? One of the chairs.
Hi, let's see, I have a little gap. I attended the Snohomie Valley Transportation Advocacy Workshop, I think our city injur- I saw you and then I never made it over to say hi. Um, they had advocacy workshop, um, obviously, we know we don't get a lot of transit out here and so just how to advocate. Um, for those grants, how to tell the stories, like where would you go depending on what the issue was? Uh, what entity would you go to first to advocate? So it was really interesting, I have some notes, but I haven't had time to kind of put together, but, um. Other thing was, oh, um, the Small Cities, uh, crap, for N L C, so I had sent the. Down to the links to the proclamation and asked, um, or just made it known because I attended their virtual council meeting and the council meeting was about. What the different cities are doing to celebrate, kind of discussion about, you know, what makes a small city a small city and that it does make up a majority, the membership of N L C and a lot of the other. I'm sure, I, the same would be said for A W C as well, so it's a really powerful thing and then how do we bring our voices to the table? There's some interesting ways people were celebrating, uh, mostly just creating videos and some fun social media, so. Uh, proclamation, I think, was, you know, our great way of putting it out there, the Small Cities Month, but that's it.
So, uh, councilman role? Next week is the annual conference for the Association of Washington Cities, I say we get there on Thursday, so I'll be Thursday. I haven't said what breakout sessions I'm going to get, I'll try to find ones that are most helpful to us here, um, but if anything you can do before. Time to look out for, um, about, before back and over.
I don't think, some of us are going, I haven't been either, so this will be the first time as well, so. The goal for the. Um. I have sort of a brief update, uh, you mentioned, um. South Cities Association, so their recent objective, their coming, um, they, they kicked off a new session with Mayor Proton, so they, they held that. It was a few, I think there were only like six of us there, but then a couple others, Carnation, so it's an opportunity to. Sort of discuss in a little more informal session, uh, to bring Robert up to speed, uh, separate and apart from the, from the pick committee, um. The other record that I made earlier, I think in the cow was. South Cities Association did a survey across the membership and a lot of the feedback was around, particularly on the pick, um. He said it was, that was a lot of report out without a lot of opportunity to take action, and I think city administrator records. There's the big cities versus the small cities and, uh, while there's commonality around some things like, like, uh, some of the, uh. The levy sort of fatigue, uh, across the board, there's other things that are very specific and, and so one of the. Items that was introduced at this last meeting was really trying to kind of revamp the pick, uh, to become more of a hooking session. Earlier to actually have an opportunity to take action rather than learn about things. Where really the only way to take action is sort of some emergency motion or essentially just report out, so. The, the, the call, I guess, there from city involved in that movie, there might be items that we would want to bring into the cow with discussion or in the formal council. Uh, to point for, a point of view versus often I find that the agenda. You know, maybe before the meeting and there's not a lot of opportunity, uh, to act on it. And then really the other, from a policy perspective, the, the others that were actually discussed was the public safety levy. And King County is actually deciding to sort of report into the ban down and. And the, how that had the impact that I think that we discussed, it's limited, but in terms of how it can be used. I think the broader conversation was kind of that sort of. Uh, because we paid within King County and to the others, you know, it's sort of a double win-win in terms of how we get impact because a lot of those resources that the sheriff hasn't necessarily. So our police department and then how we would, if we wanted to do something, so we'll show again, it was a good discussion, no action was taken, I think the expectation. Is it a delicate moment in July, so we still have an opportunity, not a lot in the, you know, we said, I think, um, uh. The King County representative offered to set up some fine with me or for city to sort of talk about their perspective, so, uh, but. I think it's, it's great that they're looking for more than had earlier, we'll just take it for that, which can, uh, very. So, yes, not. I think it brings us to the, uh, the one item. Uh, this evening, under visiting business, which is the agenda bill twenty-five, twenty-six, if you may, Montez, the, the senior planner, to bring us an update, um, the. Twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan.
Day, councilmembers, uh. So looking for you tonight, uh, the staff to request to be adoption of the. Plan, um, planning commission did recommend adoption. Um, so at this time, that is the only request.
You know, we've had a couple opportunities where you brought us updates, we've done walk-throughs that addresses the. Time where we actually have to take the action, is there a motion? But, um, oh.
And to approve the adoption of the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan, if you're adding anything.
Thank you. Uh. Motion's been, uh, been motioned and seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? We can't get a bill passed, so I, you, you've got to do, I can, and then that was a lot, lot of work coming to get us to the point where we did it up, uh.
So, um, thank you, also, um. A huge moment of celebration, more, I wanna, I, I cannot think that more profusely, but I'll be short about it. Uh, Lorenzo and Naomi worked for two and a half years on this project, um. It is a beautiful document, um, in terms of just visually how it's represented, it's interactive, it's interesting. It's dynamic and, uh, they've done an incredible job, so I want to thank you.
I, I just want to sort of add on to that, I, I think in, in addition to getting it done, which it defeats left. Uh, it expanded in scope because there were new modules in terms of revisiting parts in open, in trans, open space areas, uh, other. So there was new work and then you had a bunch of new requirements come down at the state level, so I sort of just want to echo your comment, I think there's a lot of appreciation. You did that, we loved you, we just have to sort of discuss it and, and, and approve it, but, uh, but thanks to staff. Yes.
Just on the agenda bill, um, the council review history alone just goes back to twenty twenty-three. That's just our review history, so I mean, that's just a, this small hint of you matter work, this one's.
Very much appreciated. And so, uh, with that, uh, there being no additional business this evening, uh. During the Duval City Council at seven thirty-one camp.